TCTO and Southern Mindanao for GSC. This university, this diversity and inclusivity will be lost if the three chancellor regions will just be replaced by one. It is because of this aforementioned legislative intent and wisdom that in Republic Act number sixty-sixty, as amended, which established MSU TCTO, provides for three members, preferably from Sulu. Tawi-Tawi was still part of the province then, in the Board of Regents of the university. Likewise, Republic Act number five-three-six-three, the law establishing MSU IIT provides for three members of the Board on IIT matters. Later, Memorandum number forty-five, series of nineteen-eighty-six, was issued by President Corazon C. Aquino, which finally provides for the chancellors of MSU IIT, MSU TCTO, and MSU GSC as members of the BOR of the university. That is the historical backdrop, legislative intent, and the legislative wisdom behind the membership of the aforementioned chancellors from the three campuses of the university. And that honorable and that fair members of this parliament is what my proposed resolution is seeking to preserve. In my fifteen years as member of the Board of Regents of MSU, as then chancellor of MSU TCTO from nineteen-ninety-five to twenty-ten, I found with all sincerity the current membership of the BOR, which includes the three chancellor regions, to have been effective in ensuring the representation and participation of all the constituent university campuses in the decision-making process of the MSU system. If and when the MSU charter shall be amended, it must strengthen the university as a national university to play a vital proactive role in peace-building, peacemaking, and peacekeeping, and in the peace process, and help cohesion the socioeconomic development of Mindanao, particularly the Bangsa-Moro Autonomous Region by keeping the spirit of diversity and inclusivity alive. Wabila'tawikwalhidaya, wassalamualaikum warakmatulahita Allah, wabarokatu.
Wa alaikum salam warakmatulah.
Mr. Speaker, I move to open the period of interpolation.
There is a motion to open the period of interpolation debate. It's been seconded. The motion is approved.
First interpolator is Deputy Speaker Paisalintago to be followed by MP Amir Mualil, and then Deputy Floor Leader Jolo Rena, and then MP Bayinta Napatuan.
The gentleman from Lanaudal Sur is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. This resolution is a simple resolution because, principally, we have expressing the sentiments of the parliament as regards House Bill number nine-six-nine.
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
What is the meaning of this expressing of sentiment? Are we against House Bill number nine-six-nine?
House Bill number six-nine, Mr. Speaker, is now being deliberated by the Committee on Education and Technical Education, the House of Representatives.
So ano pang nilalaman nito? Tayo po ba, Mr. Speaker, ay hindi sumasangayon sa provision ng House Bill number nine-six-nine?
Mr. Speaker, hindi po tayo sumasangayon doon sa provision ng House Bill number nine-six-nine. Kasi po, tatanggalin po ng House Bill nine-six-nine ang tatlong members ng Board of Regents na galing po sa MSU Tawi-Tawi, galing sa MSU Idigan, at galing po sa MSU General Santos to be replaced by only one chancellor region representing all the chancellors of the Mindanao State University po.
So ibig sabihin, ang sinasayungan na, hindi natin sinasangayunan, Mr. Speaker. What we disagree about is House Bill number nine-six-nine is that the three chancellor regions, Mr. Speaker, of the Mindanao State University will be abolished and instead it will be put into one chancellor region under House Bill number nine-six-nine.
Oppo po, Mr. Chancellor, that is right, that what we are opposing in House Bill number nine-six-nine is the replacement of the three chancellor regions I have mentioned from the three campuses to only one. Ang nakalakay po dito sa House Bill nine-six-nine, ay isa na lang po ang magiging chancellor region representing all the chancellors of the Mindanao State University system. Bakit po?
Yes.
Bakit po ating hindi sinasangayunan? Kagaya ng sinabi ko sa aking sponsors of speech, Mr. Speaker, itong tatlong ito ay nangangahulugan po ng inclusive participation in decision-making po of the MSU system. Kasi po, ang Idigan po ay covers Northern Mindanao. Pagkatapos, ang Tawi-Tawi po covers Basilan, Sulu, Tawi-Tawi, and Palawan. At ang General Santos po, dito sa Southern Mindanao po. Sa palagay ko po, at saka karamihan po sa amin, in fact, nagkaroon na po ng butuhan. Sa Board of Regents last board meeting ng nagattend po ako, out of thirteen, bumoto, labing isa ang bumoto in favor of retaining the three chancellor regions as members of the Board of Regents. At ang alumni region po, ang siya lang po nagabstain. And including the chair, kasi wala namang kong division of the house. So the chair also abstained sa election po. So labing isa po kami, members ng Board of Regents ang bumoto na suportahan po, na opposing, no? Yung isa na lang po ang alumni, ang chancellor region sa House Bill number nine-six-nine po.
May ano, Mr. Speaker, kung alam ng ating proponent ng resolution, what will be the wisdom of the Congress in abolishing or putting into one chancellor region? Kasi so definitely may wisdom niyan, may wrong intention, why the want to abolish these three chancellor regions who have been there for several years? So may ano from the proponent, Mr. Speaker, what will be the wisdom of Congress?
If I were to speculate, kasi hindi naman po ako, hindi naman po natin alam kung ano talaga ang intention ng Congress, no? Pero if I were to speculate, kasi gusto nila lang po na isa na lang, isa na lang talaga. Kasi they assume that yung isang chancellor could represent already the all the eleven campuses of the Mindanao State University, which we disagree. Kasi po, kung tutuusin po, kung titingnan din po natin, nung barn, nung ano pa po, thirty-two, ang members of the Assembly, thirty-two lang po. Ngayon, nagkaroon tayo ng barn para po mas-participatory ang governance ng barn, nagkaroon po tayo ng A.T. Ang aking paningin lang po, instead of making the the system of the Board in decision-making of the Board, kasi po ang Board of Regents is the policymaking body. Kung isa lang po, kung isa lang po ang magiging chancellor region niyan. Sa palagay ko po, kung yan ay General Santos ang mapili. Can General Santos speak for Tawi-Tawi? Can he speak for Sulu? Can he speak for Basilan? So ang sa tingin ng mga members of the Board is, hindi po nakakaganda, no? Ang intensyon, kung ano man ang intensyon ng Congress, na magiging isa na lang ang chancellor region po. Kaya, we would like the Board of Regents be more participatory and more inclusive sa policymaking body of the university po, yun po.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Actually, the bill itself, hindi naman ito ginawa ng Congress na out of the blue. There is a study of this by Congress, that's why I did that. My question, Mr. Speaker, is, is the bill regarding the abolition or dissolution of the three chancellor in the MSU being, ah, the recombination of the president of the MSU were sought by the House of Representatives?
Mr. Speaker, the Board, in fact, the Board, it's not only the president, but it was the president of the university who submitted after our Board of Regents meeting last May, may, kailangan nyo sinabi ko? May thirty-one, nagsubmit na po, kasama po, just the draft, just the draft of our resolution, sinama na po ng presidente, doon sa kanilang position paper to Congress. Kaya, just after that meeting, ako po ay gumawa kaagad ng drafted already the resolution and submitted. Even then, I gave the Board of Regents, the president, a copy of this resolution just to inform the Board, just to inform Congress na inayawan po ng university yung tatanggalin ang dalawang chancellor po.
So meaning, Mr. Speaker, the president of the MSU now has expressed their opposition to the bill. Does it be in writing, or it was done orally during the committee deliberation?
It was, the opposition was deliberated in the Board of Regents meeting, as I had mentioned, last May thirty-one. And the president, the technical staff of the president already prepared its position paper opposing the deletion or the removal of the two chancellor regions from the Board of Regents. So ginawa po officially, nagsubmit na po ng Board of Regents ng kanilang position paper po.
Last question, itong bill nito ang inabolishing position, not the person, the person holding the position?
You're right po. Ah, tama po yun, Mr. Speaker, hindi po yung tao ang irere retain kundi yung position po ng MSU chancellor, halimbawa ng Tawi-Tawi.
Matatanggal na mismo, wala na ng chancellor ng Tawi-Tawi. Walang chancellor ng General Santos, walang chancellor ng Hulo. So ibig sabihin, yun ang matatanggal.
Ang matata, sa ngayon po.
Position mismo, Mr. Speaker.
Yes, yes. Two-two po, yung position po ng tatlong chancellor regions ang matatanggal at papalitan lang po ng isang chancellor region, yun lang po.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Speaker, for the interrogation po of my boss chancellor, my boss minister from, of...
The gentleman from Tawi-Tawi is now recognized.
With due respect to my uncle colleague, MP Edi Ali, I'd just like to pose some clarificatory questions. The resolution made mention about, actually, it's the subject of the resolution, House Bill nine-six-nine intends to amend the charter of the MSU system, right? Do you know what is the reason behind the proposed amendment of the charter of the MSU system?
As I have mentioned earlier, I really cannot speculate, Mr. Speaker, as to the reasons of Congress. But when the bill was filed and it was referred to the Committee on Education and Basic and Technical Education of Congress, that was the time that the university was asked to react on this. And the Board itself made it as an agenda, as part of the agenda of the Board of Regents meeting regarding this House Bill number nine-six-nine. As a matter of fact, it's not all, it's not all the provisions was opposed by the Board, except this, except this. In fact, we even suggested to strengthen, to strengthen the bill, to strengthen the House Bill number nine-six-nine. We even suggested in some provisions, how it has to be strengthened. We did that, Mr. Speaker, in the position paper of the Board of Regents to the House of Representatives.
Thank you for that, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, may I read the explanatory note of the House Bill nine-six-nine, particularly the third paragraph? It says here, "The existing charter of the MSU is currently six decades old and is already, to quote, obsolete, as unresponsive and weak in relation to the university's urgent needs and requirements in view of the prevailing domestic and global challenges it faces." So the proponent of the bill, House Bill nine-six-nine, argues that the current, that the existing charter of MSU is obsolete. Therefore, it presents a compelling reason to amend one of certain provisions, and one of those is the subject of this resolution, which is to amend the composition of the Board of Regents. My next question, Mr. Speaker, is that the election of the MSU president is through the Board of Regents, am I right, Mr. Speaker?
No. The president of the Mindanao State University, like the University of the Philippines, there are only two state universities of the country whose presidents are appointed by the president of the Republic of the Philippines. So it's not the Board.
Thank you for that clarification, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, can you cite very important role of the Board of Regents in terms of decision-making in the whole system of the Mindanao State University?
In terms of the policymaking of the university? We have the Board of Regents. And the Board of Regents, as I have explained earlier, are specified, are specified particularly the membership of the three chancellors during the revolutionary government of President Coria Aquino. The membership even of the chancellors of MSU Tawi-Tawi was reduced from three to one. The membership in the Board of MSU Tawi-Tawi. Republic Act sixty-sixty, creating the Mindanao State University in Tawi-Tawi, has three members of the Board. In like manner, the charter establishing the Iligan Institute of Technology has also three members of the Board. Looking at the wisdom of Congress for having three members of the Board for Tawi-Tawi, for Iligan, I think it cannot be, as earlier asked, we cannot all speculate, why is it Tawi-Tawi has three members of the Board? Why is it Idigan has three members of the Board? Now, during the revolutionary government of President Coria Aquino, it was reduced to only one, making the chancellor of the university just a member of the Board. Okay, so as to why it should be reduced, as I have said, and based on the explanatory note of the bill of the House, if the intention of the bill is that the charter of the university is already obsolete, it was in nineteen-sixty-one, okay? The creation of MSU was in nineteen-sixty-one. If it is already obsolete, and it should be made, it should be strengthened, then I think it's not reducing the Board, the membership of the Board that will strengthen the university. In fact, in fact, Mr. Speaker, I even say that reducing the membership of the Board, the chancellor regions from one to three, that does not, that's not, in my own thinking, no, it does not make the university obsolete by having these three. In fact, if we can only have it more, because we have already eleven campuses in the university, and we are only represented by three due to geographical considerations, as I have mentioned in my sponsorship. In fact, if it is necessary even to have all the chancellors, then that make the policymaking of the university system more inclusive, more participatory. So ang isang tinitingnan po natin dito, Mr. Speaker, paano po magkakaroon ang Board ng policy na mas inclusive po ang representation, mas participatory po ang representation? Does it make the university na matagal na, o kaya obsolete na, by having a participatory, an inclusive policymaking body? Does it make it obsolete? I don't think so, that's why we disagree. If the intention of Congress is that strengthening or amending the Lord of the university, we have no objection if it means to strengthen. But I don't agree that by removing the three chancellors to be replaced by just one chancellor region will make it more inclusive and participatory for the university. Yun lang po ang aking explanation po, I cannot just speculate what Congress, the intention of Congress po.
Mr. Speaker, allow me to dig deeper on this one. You cited, other than cultural diversity and representation, can you, you were a longtime chancellor of the MSU Tawi-Tawi, the CTO. Can you cite some examples where these three Board of Regents, member of the Board of Regents who are chancellors of different campuses of MSU made a difference in the decision-making of the MSU system? Were there controversial issues that were championed by these three chancellors representing different campuses? Because I have yet to see the wisdom behind the decrease of the membership of the chancellors to one from three by the proponent of House Bill nine-six-nine. But I also would like this body for us to present a more compelling reason why we need to retain the current composition. Because if we will just express our sentiment that it is not, that we do not agree with such move, and that we do not supply it with a more compelling reason to retain this, then the House of Representatives might see this as a plimsy appeal to amend the current draft of the House Bill nine-six-nine.
Mr. Speaker, let me just explain the dynamics of the Board. Even in coordination and cooperation among campuses, if the chancellors in the Board are well-represented, ang ibig ko sabihin, tatlo o mas marami pa, okay? The university as a system can work well with this number of chancellors. Kaya ang sinasabi ko nga kanina, and in fact, during my defense in the Board, kung bakit I'm for the retention. Kasi again, I emphasize, at hindi po ito nakita ng university before, ng pag-usapan, nga ako ay nagsanitahan na po, hindi po ito nakita. Ang sinasabi ko dito, as I have emphasized, making the Board the policymaking body of the Board to be more inclusive and well-represented. Ang nakikita ko dito, kung, kagaya ng sinabi ko kanina, at paulit ko ring sasabihin, kung isa lang po ang chancellor, paano po magiging inclusive ang policymaking body of the university? Okay? Ang sinasabi natin, opo, opo, andun po ang university president representing all the campuses. Alam po ba ng presidente, anong nangyayari dun sa Tawi-Tawi? Alam po ba nila, anong nangyayari dun sa Hulo? Ganun, okay? And we have already eleven campuses. So ang puwento po dito, kung bakit, kung bakit inayawan po natin, at why we would like to express na opposing that, ano, opposing that provision of the Board. Kasi para sa akin po, hindi po nakakaganda sa university, making it more, yung halimbawa, ganun, no? Isa na lang po, okay? Ang chancellor region, no? Kaya para sa akin, ulitin ko po, ang aking foundation opposing that is, we would like as much as possible, the policymaking body of the university to be more participatory and to be more inclusive. Yun lang po ang essence ng, kung bakit po tayo, gusto natin, kung bakit inayawan po natin, yung isang chancellor na lang po.
Mr. Speaker, last two questions, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, what is the role of the Board in terms of appropriation, budget preparation of each of the campuses of MSU? Ano po yung role ng Board of Regents?
Yeah, pagdating po sa budget, okay? Pagdating po sa budget, bawat campus po, okay? Bawat campus po yan ay gumagawa din po ng kanilang budget. They prepare the budget, and the Board endorses, no? The budget to DBM, yun ang role. But bawat campus ay gumagawa po ng syriling nila. Ngayon, itong campuses na'to, MSU Tawi-Tawi, MSU Idigan, these are the natawag natin, except General Santos City, is not a chartered campus. Sa MSU system, tatlo lang po ang chartered, the main campus being the mother university. And MSU Tawi-Tawi was created by Republic Act sixty-sixty, and IIT was created by another Republic Act po. So sa amin, sa ngayon, sa sistema ngayon ng university, all the other campuses nakalakay po doon ang budget sa main campus, kasi hindi po sila chartered. Although, pagdating po doon sa DBM, may ano na yan, may individual na po, bawat campus mayroon na. Pero dumadaan po sila sa university, yung unchartered, yung non-chartered campuses. Pero yung dalawa, yung MSU Tawi-Tawi pati MSU Idigan, a chartered university po, um, diretso po, no?
And ano po yung role ng Board?
Ang role ng Board po, sinasabi ko na yan, syempre, rin-review po namin yan. Kasi it's not po, it's not lang po sa MSU system, member ako ng Board. All state colleges and universities in the barn ay may member of the Board. Ang ginagawa po ng Board, in all this, in all this, soaks, ini-endorse po namin, after na-review yan, after na-review yan ng regional offices ng barn, as ano, sa Region Nine, Region Twelve, ganun. The Board, ini-endorse po yan, at inhalungkat din po namin yan, no? Unang-unat, tinatanong namin po ang DBM representative in the Board, mayroon po yan DBM representative. Ito po ba, na-review rin po ba ito ng DBM, member ng board? Okay, so, ganon po, iniendorse po ng board ang budget ng, ng mga SOX.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I would like to dig deeper, but I think my time is up. But my point here, Mr. Speaker, is if we can list down, uh, uh, list items that are, that will be, that will be affected by this move to reduce the member of board of region from the ranks of the chancellors, then it is, ang, ang gusto kong mangyari sana, sir, is, uh, Mr. Speaker, is magkakaroon ng, kung magkakaroon ba ito ng direct, ng effect doon sa mga programs ng mga campuses. For example, since ngayon wala ng, possibly pag napasa itong isa lang 'yung chancellor na board member representing all the chancellors, hindi na ma-strengthen 'yung mga programs ng campus. It might be, could be, na hindi na ma-push 'yung mga specialized programs kagaya ng MSU TCTO na, that are trying to specialize in marine and aquaculture courses in, in this part of the country. Yun sana 'yung makita, gusto natin makitang reason dito, that there should be a compelling reason na pwede nating i-argue sa Committee on Education ng House of Representatives that would put them in, in a decision na kailangan talagang i-retain 'yung uh, current composition. Yun lang, Mr. Speaker.
One minute suspension, Mr. Speaker.
Session is suspended for one minute. Session resumes.
Mr. Speaker, in view of, um, the complexity of the substance of the proposed resolution, may I, um, refer, uh, move to refer the proposed resolution number 282 to the Committee on Basic Higher and Technical Education, Mr. Speaker?
Uh, without opposing that, I'd just like to have one brief manifestation for the clarity of the resolution when we go to the committee.
Yeah, uh, you can proceed with your manifestation. Make it brief.
Thank you briefly, Mr. Speaker. This issue of strengthening MSU is agreed upon before the passage of 11054, when BARM insisted on its representation to the Mindanao State University. It is already contained in section 16 of Article 9, Basic Rights, that the national government will continue to strengthen the MSU system and allow representation from the committee of the BARM to represent the Bangsa Moro in its board. And therefore, it is now a policy stated by the national government for downsizing of, uh, the bureaucracy that include the MSU system. We have incorporated that under section 16 of Article 9. And it also provides that where there are conflict of person, personalities between a board and a chancellor, the other sector should be removed. Why? The board is, Board of Regents is the policymaking body of the MSU and the chancellors are its implementer. If the chancellor dominates the board, then the implementer, the, it will become the jury and the judge together in one system. So I think that brief manifestation is found in the transcript of proceedings in the discussion of Republic Act 11054, which I believe the committee would have to look into so that we will not be howling on an issue that, that will come back to us. And I think my kuya is the chairman of our Committee on Education and here presentation in the board and that should have been brought into the light of the board system because they might, the Congress of the Philippines might put this back to us. You demanded for this to be part of the system because the BTA represents the Bangsa Moro and it includes all the island components of the Bangsa Moro. It includes Hulus, Basilan, Tawi-Tawi, and that is the issue of unity within the Bangsa Moro. Thank you. Just a brief manifestation to remind us that we may have agreed on something that we are retracting it back in the transcript of proceedings. Thank you. Wabila, Taupik, Palidaya, wassalamualaikum, barakatuh, tulai, talubrakan.
I will now rule on the motion. There is a motion to refer proposed resolution number 282 to the Committee on Basic Higher and Technical Education. It has been seconded. There being no objection, the motion is approved.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Next is proposed resolution number 285. May we request the Secretary General to please need the title, the author, and the co-author?
Yes, uh, the secretariat is directed to read the title of proposed resolution number 285 including the name of the authors and co-authors.
Proposed Resolution Number 285 entitled "Resolution Congratulating the Ministry of Basic Higher and Technical Education, MBHTE, for the Successful Conduct of the 2023 Bangsa Moro Autonomous Region and Muslim Mindanao Athletic Association, Barmaa Meet." Author, member of the parliament, Bintan Ampatuan. Co-authors, members of the parliament, Amil Bahar Mawalil, Laisa Adamiam, Soharto Angboluto, Don Mustapaloong, Rasool Mitbog Jr., and Rasul Ismail.
Mr. Speaker, I move to consider proposed resolution number 285 as a simple resolution, Mr. Speaker.
Proposed resolution, uh, it is being moved that proposed resolution number 285 to be treated as simple resolution. Been seconded, there being no objection, is now referred to the order of business.
Mr. Speaker, may we recognize the principal author, MP Engineer by Intan Ampatuan?
The lady from Magindanao is recognized.
Thank you, um, thank you very much, Mr. Speaker, floor leader. Um, meron po akong prepared speech, Mr. Speaker, but, um, in the interest of time, I will not read it. The resolution is very simple. Um, minsan, halos lahat na ata kinakongratulate natin, pero sila nasalabas. Minsan nakalimutan natin 'yung sarili nating bakuran na meron din namang kailangang ikongratulate. The reason why we, I want to raise this, uh, resolution, Mr. Speaker, is that, number one, ito ata 'yung unang pagkakataon after the long pandemic na, na gather altogether 'yung ating mga athletes. Pangalawa, this is the first time that Gotabato City hosted, uh, the, uh, the Barmaa. At, uh, 'yung mga circumstances surrounding the, the conduct of the Barmaa, at the time, ay, uh, nagbabadya, nung, uh, napuan tayo nung super typhoon mawar. Pero siguro dahil sa three years nung mga bata at three years nating lahat, hindi tayo malubang tinamaan. At walang mga untoward incidents na nangyari during the course of the conduct of the, uh, of the Barmaa. At, uh, I heard over the radios that there were positive, um, a positive comments regarding the, the conduct of the Barmaa and therefore, I think the parliament should also recognize it. And that's the rationale, Mr. Speaker. Thank you very much.
Okay, Mr. Speaker, while I don't see anyone who wishes to interpolate, Mr. Speaker, um, I would like to move that all members of the parliament who are present here today be included as co-authors, Mr. Speaker.
There is a motion to include all members present today to be co-authors of the proposed resolution. It's been seconded. Uh, the motion is approved.
Mr. Speaker, I move to dispense with the period of interpolation and debate as well as the period of amendment, Mr. Speaker.
There is now a motion to, to dispense with the period of interpolation debate as well as the period of amendment. It's been seconded. The motion is approved.
I move, Mr. Speaker, to approve proposed resolution number 285, subject to style, Mr. Speaker.
There is a motion to approve proposed resolution number 285, subject to style. It's been seconded. The motion is approved.
Next, Mr. Speaker, is proposed resolution number 290. May we request the Secretary General, please need the title, the authors, and the co-authors?
The secretariat is directed to read the title of proposed resolution number 290 including the name of the authors and co-authors.
Proposed Resolution Number 290 entitled "Resolution Expressing Profound Condolences on the Passing of Ramir Amilasant Tawasin and Commending His Extraordinary Contributions to the Bangsa Moro Culture and Arts." Authors, members of the parliament, Amil Bahar Mawalil, John Anthony Lim, Nabil Tan, Laisa Adamiam, Don Mustapaloong, and Rasool Mitbog Jr. Co-authors, members of the parliament, Bintan Ampatuan, Soharto Angboluto, and Rasul Ismail.
Mr. Speaker, I move to treat proposed resolution number 290 as a simple resolution, Mr. Speaker.
It is being moved that proposed resolution number 290 uh, to be treated as simple resolution. Any second, there being no objection, the motion is approved and it is transferred to the business for the day.
Mr. Speaker, I, may we recognize that one of the principal authors, member of the parliament, Amil Bahar Mawalil?
The gentleman from Tawi-Tawi is recognized.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Uh, just a brief, uh, statement. Uh, I also would like to include Deputy Minority, Deputy Floor Leader Joe Lorena as a co-author of this, uh, bill, of this resolution. Wassalamualaikum, barakmatullahi, talawa, barakatu. Mr. Speaker, it is with deep sorrow that we mourn the passing of Ramir Amilasant Tawasin, globally recognized artist, master of the ukil, proud tausog and a true son of Bangsa Moro. Mr. Speaker, Ramir's brushstrokes rendered unto canvas not only his own personal experiences and worldview, but an entire people's heritage, aspirations, and even our collective trauma, Mr. Speaker. In doing so, he was able to transform our very wounds into artifacts of understanding, empathy, and ultimately, healing, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, he saw and depicted both conflict and resilience. He bore the weight of injustice while demonstrating how stubbornly our people persist in surviving and in dreaming. Mr. Speaker, he witnessed the fires of Holo and applying his genius unto his memory. He rummage through the ashes to find the human thread that allows us to connect not only with fellow Moros, but with the rest of humanity. Mr. Speaker, perhaps this is what his various accolades represent. From Manila to Zamboanga, from Kuala Lumpur to Brussels, Ramir's light shone. And through his art, we continue to, to hope for a society where compassion, solidarity, and justice reign. Mr. Speaker and fellow members of this august chamber, his passing is a profound loss to the people of the Bangsa Moro and we can only hope that the coming generation of Moro artists emulate not only his talent, Mr. Speaker, but more importantly, his rootedness and the unwavering clarity of his Bangsa Moro vision. Mr. Speaker, our thoughts and condolences go out to Ramir's family and friends and we join the rest of the Bangsa Moro people in prayer for his eternal peace. Sir Speaker, I move that we approve this resolution in honor of a great artist, a great friend of the Bangsa Moro, a true, true son of the Sulu archipelago, Ramir Tawasin.
I, I wish to be identified with this, uh, resolution.
Thank you, um, Mr. Speaker. Similar to the earlier, uh, manifestation in the previous proposed resolution, may we, uh, move that all members of the parliament who are present here today be included as co-authors, Mr. Speaker?
There is a motion to include all members of the parliament present today as co-authors to propose resolution number 290. Any second, there being no objection, the motion is approved.
Mr. Speaker, I move to open the period of interpolation. We have, uh, an interpolator, Mr. Speaker.
Who is interpolating?
Um, member of the parliament, Uyoyod, Mr. Speaker, and then a manifestation from member of the parliament, Joe Lorena.
There is a motion to open the period of interpolation debate. It's been seconded. The motion is approved.
Okay, um, may we recognize MP Uyoyod, uh, as the first interpolator, Mr. Speaker?
The lady from Datupiang Magindanao is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Thank you, Madam Floor Leader. Wassalamualaikum and good afternoon po sa ating lahat. May I know from the proponent if he's willing to answer some clarificatory questions?
It's always a pleasure, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. First is, uh, may we know, Mr. Speaker, if when did the late Tawasin start his career in the realm of art?
Mr. Speaker, I think, uh, in previous conversation with the artist, because we are friends, uh, since I was in college in Ateneo di Zamboanga, uh, he, he was saying that he started his art in late, um, while he was in school, in elementary, in grade school. Uh, that was also before the burning of Holo happened, which he was also a, which, which his family was displaced, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Um, by any chance, can the proponent show to us his iconic piece, which is the Peace Dog logo?
I think, uh, it's part of the, can we, as the secretariat, it's not actually the peace dog that he created for the peace advocate Zamboanga because it became an iconic logo of the, of the organization in Zamboanga City. So that, that is similar to the peace dog that was used by, that is being used by the peace advocate Zamboanga as, uh, as a, as an image for their trophy in, in granting peace awards in, in Zamboanga City.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
And he is also, uh, consistent with the use of ukil as, uh, as, uh, as an image because he was, I think, in, in previous conversations with him, he was mentored by national artist, another tausog, Aldol Mari Imao.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Um, by any chance, ilang taon na po si late Tawasin, Mr. Speaker?
Uh, he's in his, uh, forties, uh, in, 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 before he passed away because of leukemia, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. And lastly, um, was there a chance na maging national artist sana siya had he not passed away?
There is always a chance for national artists. Uh, there are different categories to become a national artist and one of, of, one of them is national artist for visual arts. Uh, one of the criterias for the nomination is that a non-government organization or a government institution, in this case, perhaps the Bangsa Moro Commission on the Preservation of Cultural Heritage can submit a nomination. Uh, I am not Uh, I am not really sure as to the chances, but we can al- always try, because the National Artist for Visual Arts is the most contested national artist awards. Uh, in fact, Mr. Speaker, in the last three years, during the last, last two years of the Dothirty Administration, there was no, uh, National Artist for Visual Arts, not because walang contender, maraming contender, kasi ang daming magagaling na painter, but in other categories such as National Artist for Dance, for Music, for Theater, for Literature, consistent po, parang halos every award meron sila. But puzzled din ako bakit walang National Artist for Visual Arts, which in this case, uh, the late Ramil Tawasil will fall. So hoping na with, with the, with the prodding of this body, the concern agencies or ministries can explore the possibility of nominating the late Tausog artist.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. And lastly, further, um, by any chance, Mr. Speaker, meron po bang idea if merong pending nomination in whatever sort for the late Tawasil?
Uh, officially, Mr., uh, Speaker, wala po akong alam, kasi, uh, up to the last day ng award, walang, wala masyadong official na list na lumalabas kung sino 'yung mga, kung sino 'yung mga nominees for national artists. Meron lang mga rumors ganyan, but officially, rare nag-iissue 'yung concern agency as to the list of, uh, potential nominees for the national artist. But we will find out, we, we are, we are hoping to, to talk with concern agencies. If there were attempts in the past to include our very own artist, Moro artist, uh, yun nga lang po, medyo contested 'yung, uh, visual arts. In fact, the late Abdul Mari Imau was not nominated, was not awarded as, uh, national award, a national artist for visual arts. He was awarded as national artist for sculpture. Uh, that explains kung bakit grabe ka-contested itong, uh, visual arts category. But we, we do hope that we will have a chance in, in putting Ramir Tawasil in that line.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Yun lang po.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
MP Lorena, Mr. Speaker.
The gentleman from Sulu is recognized.
Thank you, uh, Floor Leader. Thank you.
That is only a manifestation.
Yes, this is a brief manifestation. I cannot in conscience let this resolution pass without me standing to include the contribution of Ramil Tawa- Amilasan Tawasil's contribution to the Revolutionary Front and to the advocacy of self-determination. Ramir is Ramir Amilasan Tawasil. He is the son of Vice-Governor Haji Hassan Tawasil. He is the nephew of Bat's Ninety Alhusin Kaluwang and of Boy Imau. His brother is a member of the Bangsa Moro National Congress and a member of the Secretariat of many of our negotiation, Ikram Tawasil. Uh, the advocacy of self-determination inspired not only Ramir Tawasil, but started from his brother, who mentored him into this art. Accordingly, according to Ikram Tawasil, his brother, the brother Ramir Tawasil, when Ramir Tawasil was young boy, they were all inspired to adv- to speak out as an advocate of self-determination through arts. That is why their family who have been custodian and have helped many of our revolutionary movements, many of those who went for training, either in Bat's Ninety, Three Hundred, and Bombardment, also left from their, uh, ancestral homes. This having been said, we should thank Ramil Amilasan Tawasil for espousing not only the idea of self-determination through art, but for giving justice to the art of the Bangsa Moro. This to me should be put on record that the family of, not only the Kaluwang, the Imau, and the Tawasil have been in the forefront of our revolutionary struggle and have been a leader of the revolutionary movement. I should also mention here that Ramir Amilasan Tawasil is, I think, the cousin of our Deputy Minister of the Ministry of Finance and Budget, uh, Amir Amilasan. So, having said that, we are not only honoring Ramir Tawasil for his art, but we are honoring him and his family for their contribution to the, to the quest for self-determination and for achieving peace and for establishing the Bangsa Moro Autonomous Region in Muslim Mindanao through the ball. Uh, with that, I should also add to the request of my brother Amir that we honor this guy for all dear contribution to the Bangsa Moro cause. Ba'bita'itao p'kalidaya. Assalamualaikum warahmatullahi ta'ala wa barakatuh.
You hear.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I move to terminate the period of interpolation.
There is a motion to terminate the period of interpolation debate. It's been seconded. The motion is approved.
I move to dispense with the period of amendment, Mr. Speaker.
There is a motion to dispense with the period of amendments. It's been seconded. The motion is approved.
I move to approve Proposed Resolution Number Two Nine Zero, subject to style, Mr. Speaker.
There is a motion to approve Proposed Resolution Number Two Nine Zero, subject to style. It's been seconded. The motion is approved.
Next, Mr. Speaker, are Proposed Resolution Numbers Two Nine One and Three Oh Six, Mr. Speaker. May we request the Secretary General to please read the titles, the authors, and the co-authors of the separate, uh, resolutions, which speak of the same subject matter, Mr. Speaker.
The Secretariat is directed to read the titles of Proposed Resolution Number Two Nine One and Proposed Resolution Number Three Zero Six, including the name of the authors and co-authors.
Proposed Resolution Number Two Nine One entitled, "Resolution Expressing the Sincere Condolences of the Bangsa Moro Transition Authority Parliament on the Death of Pastor Troy Eric O. Cordero, Representative of Settler Communities to the Barm Council of Leaders, and conveying its profound gratitude for his invaluable contribution to the Bangsa Moro struggle for self-determination." Authors: Members of the Parliament: Soharto Ismail, Sya'ila Hadumama Albang, Anna Darhat Abasman, Aida Silungan, Raisa Jaduri, Obaida Pakasam, Madaro Listino, Marjani Makasalong, and Mary Ann Arnado. Co-authors: Members of the Parliament: Aidie Ali, Tawakal Mitimbang, Hashemi Di Lamgalen, Tawaka, Khalid Haji Abdouma, Mosber Adaudin, Ramon Piang Senior, Baylang Mantawil, and Kadel Sinulinding Junior.
Three Zero Six.
Proposed Resolution Number Three Oh Six entitled, "Resolution Expressing Sympathy and Condolences to the Brave Family of the Late Pastor Troy Eric O. Cordero, and Recognizing His Active Participation in the Peace and Development of Barm as well as his contributions as a representative of the settler communities to the Bangsa Moro Government Council of Leaders." Author: Member of the Parliament: Susana Anayatin. Co-authors: Members of the Parliament: Bay Maleha Kandaw, Tawakal Mitimbang, Don Mustafa Loong, Ramon Piang Senior, Abdalaje Saminudin, Albakel Jikiri, Dan Asnowih, Naikal Mitimbang, Mujib Abu, Ale Montaha Babaw, and Hatimil Hassan.
Mr. Speaker, I move to treat both Proposed Resolutions as simple resolutions, Mr. Speaker.
There is a motion to treat Proposed Resolution Number Two Nine One and Proposed Resolution Number Three Zero Six as simple resolution. It has been seconded. The motion is approved.
Mr. Speaker, the principal author of Proposed Resolution Number Two Nine One has yielded to the principal author of Proposed Resolution Number Three Zero Six for, uh, the purpose of giving some statements. May we recognize MP Susana Anayatin.
Lady from Magindanao is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Assalamualaikum. Magandang hapon po sa ating lahat. Mr. Speaker, it is with great sadness that the Bangsa Moro Parliament learned of the passing of Pastor Troy Eric Obrigoso Cordero. On behalf of the Bangsa Moro Government, we send our deepest condolences to Pastor Troy's family at this difficult time. The region mourns with you and celebrates the, uh, extraordinary life of this exceptional man who devoted a portion of it to the Bangsa Moro cause. Pastor Troy was a guardian of peace and an advocate of genuine development in the Barm. He shared so much of his time and effort in supporting the passage of Bangsa Moro Basic Law and campaigning for the inclusion of Cotabato City in the Bangsa Moro Autonomous Region in Muslim Mindanao. Mr. Speaker, Pastor Troy indeed became part of our success in obtaining our lifelong dream of exercising our right to self-determination as the Bangsa Moro people. He was certainly one of the forerunners of the autonomy that we savor today. So, Mr. Speaker, today is our opportunity to express our heartfelt gratitude for the significant contributions that Pastor Troy has imparted to the Bangsa Moro people. Surely, the worthful time that he spent in service to the Bangsa Moro cause will forever be remembered. Hence, the adoption of this resolution is hereby earnestly sought. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, in view of the similar tenor of both resolutions, I move for the consolidation of the two resolutions, Mr. Speaker.
There is a, there is a motion to consolidate Proposed Resolution Number Two Nine One and Three, uh, Proposed Resolution Number Three Zero Six. It's been seconded. The motion is approved.
Mr. Speaker, I would like to speak on behalf of all, uh, members of the parliament who are present today that we would like to be, uh, associated as co-authors of the consolidated resolutions, Mr. Speaker.
Secretariat, please take note.
Mr. Speaker, there being no interpolators, I move to dispense with the period of interpolation and amendment, Mr. Speaker.
There is a motion to dispense with the period of interpolation and amendment. It's been seconded. The period of interpolation amendment is now, uh, dispensed.
Mr. Speaker, I move to approve the consolidated Proposed Resolutions Number Two Nine One and Three Zero Six, subject to style, Mr. Speaker.
There is a motion to approve Consolidated Resolution, Proposed Resolution Number Two Nine One and Three Zero Six, subject to style. It's been seconded. The motion is approved.
We move to Proposed Resolution Number Two Ninety-Two. Mr. Speaker, may we request the Secretary General to please read the title and the author.
The Secretariat is directed to read the title of Proposed Resolution Number Two Nine Two, including the name of the authors and co-author.
Proposed Resolution Number Two Nine Two entitled, "Resolution Commending and Congratulating the Passers of the No- of the November Twenty Twenty-Two Philippine Bar Examination conducted by the Supreme Court of the Philippines, most especially the one hundred fifteen new Bangsa Moro lawyers, underscoring the exams, fourteenth placer, fellow Bangsa Moro, Rashid Jammi Taraji." Author: Member of the, of the Parliament: Khalid Haji Abdouma.
Mr. Speaker, I move to consider Proposed Resolution Number Two Ninety-Two as a simple resolution, Mr. Speaker.
There is a motion to treat Proposed Resolution Number Two Nine Two as a simple resolution. It's been seconded. The motion is approved.
Mr. Speaker, may we hear from the author, principal author, MP Khalid Haji Abdullah.
The gentleman from Lanaldal Sur is recognized.
Assalamualaikum warahmatullahi ta'ala wa barakatuh. Mr. Speaker, I would like to deliver a short message for my Resolution Number Two Ninety-Two. Everyone knows that the Philippine Bar Examinations is one of the hardest licensure examinations in the country, if not the hardest. That is why it is but befitting that we commend, congratulate, and recognize those who hurdled state exam. More so when many of our fellow Bangsa Moros managed to cross the uncursable bridge to achieve the final dot of the prefix A T T Y. These bar passers successfully scaled what time and again has proven to be a Herculean battery of exams. Therefore, the families and supportive communities of these passers also deserve compliments for through their love and cheer, victory is achieved. Again, congratulations to all November Two Hundred, Twenty Twenty-Two bar passers, especially the one hundred fifty new Bangsa Moro lawyers, most especially the ex- fourteenth placer attorney, our Rashid Jammi Taraji CPA from Ateneo di Zambuanga University. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Floor Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move to open the period of interpolation.
There is a motion to open the period of interpolation. Any second. It's been seconded. The motion is approved.
Mr. Speaker, uh, let us recognize MP Deputy Speaker Paisalintago for a few questions.
The, the other gentleman from Lanaldal Sur is recognized.
Only, only one question, eh, eh, uh, uh, regarding the mention of the number hundred fifteen new lawyers. Baka ko lang o kaya sobra. So, I suggest, uh, Mr. Speaker, uh, all Bangsa Moro who pass the bar exams, we should not mention the numbers. Kasi merong, merong Bangsa Moro na 'yung pangalan niya na id- Muslim name. Just like Kusilorina. Oh. Oh, that's my example. So, there are, there are plenty. There, there, oh, si, si Rasul Parkan, Bong Parkasio. Si Kusilorina pala, yusopang pangalan. Yun ko lang nalaman. Uh, si Rasul. Si Randall Parkasio is Rasul Parkasio. Yes, uh, we should not mention the numbers, because there are maybe more than hundred fifteen who pass the bar exam. If the proponent will agree with me, Mr. Speaker.
You're suggesting to, uh, delete the number and just place all.
All, all Bangsa Moro.
Well accepted, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Secretariat, take note.
So there being no other interpolators, I move to close the period of interpolation, Mr. Speaker.
The period of interpolation debate is now open.
Mr. Speaker, um...
We have, we have already told the Secretariat to take note of the proposal of, uh, MP Tago, of Deputy Speaker Tago.
With that, Mr. Speaker, I move to dispense with the period of amendment, Mr. Speaker.
There is a motion to dispense with the period of amendments. It's been seconded. The motion is approved.
I move to approve Proposed Resolution Two Nine Two, subject to style, Mr. Speaker.
There is a motion to approve Proposed Resolution Number Two Nine Two, subject to style.
With a further motion to include all of the members of the parliament who are here, Mr. Speaker.
And to include all members of the parliament present as co-authors, subject to style. It's been seconded. The motion is approved.
Next, Mr. Speaker, is Proposed Resolution Number Three Three Five, Mr. Speaker. May we request the Secretary General to please read the title and the authors.
The Secretariat is directed to read the title of the Proposed Resolution Number Three Three Five, including the name of the authors and co-authors.
Proposed Resolution Number Three Three Five entitled, "Resolution Respectfully Urging His Excellency, Cardinal R. Marcos Junior to Grant Clemency to Former LTP Chairman, Former ARRM, ARMM and Magindanao Governor, Former MNLEF and MLF Legal Counsel Dato Zakkaria Kandaw, and Former Chair of the Bangsa Moro Development Agency, Dr. Abbas Kandaw." Author: Members of the Parliament: Ahod Ibrahim Pangalian Balindrong, Omariya Cersema, Nabil Tan, Paisalintago, Lanang Ali Junior, Lysa Lamiam, Sya'ila Hadumama Alba, Raisa Jaduri, Anna Darhat Abasman, Mary Ann Arnado, Jose Lorena, Obaida Pakasam, Randall Parkasio, Sitifahani Uy Oyod, John Anthony Lim, Soharto Ambulutok, Eschak Mastura, Rasul Mitmug Junior, Bahintan Ang Batuan, and Benjamin Luong.
I move to suspend, uh, for one minute, Mr. Speaker.
Session suspended for one minute.
Sir, I move to treat proposed Resolution Number Three Three Five as a simple resolution, Mister Speaker.
There is a motion to treat, uh, Resolution Number Three Three Five as a simple resolution. In a second, there being, the motion is duly seconded, there being no objection, this is by accord.
Mister Speaker, may we recognize principal author, Deputy Speaker Omar Semah to deliver a few words, Mister Speaker.
Deputy Speaker Omar Semah is duly recognized for the sponsorship words on Resolution Number Three Three Five.
Bismillahirrahmanirrahim. Assalamualaikum warahmatullahi ta'ala wabarakatuh. My courtesy is to the Chief Minister of the Bangsa Moro Autonomous Region Muslim Mindanao. The Speaker of the Parliament, fellow officers, the Presiding Officer, and colleagues in the Parliament. Again, assalamualaikum warahmatullahi ta'ala wabarakatuh. My colleagues, our people's attainment of the establishment of the Bangsa Moro is the coveted fruit of the long-drawn Moro people's painstaking collective sacrifices of known and unknown men, of leaders who went out of their way, ready and willing to give up personal positions and powers for the greater interest of the Bangsa Moro. And the leadership of the Bangsa Moro struggle is not limited to those who are in the rank and file, let alone in the hierarchy of the Moro Liberation Fronts. But they come as well from among the Bangsa Moro political scientists, thinkers, religious scholars, ideologues, professionals, and the academe. And hence this, Mister Speaker, I am raising a point of view that the Bangsa Moro Transition Authority, with powers mandated by Republic Act eleven zero five, eleven zero five, or otherwise known as the Organic Law for the Bangsa Moro Autonomous Region in Muslim Mindanao, we acknowledge and recognize the contribution of each and every Mujahideen, political officers, and activists operating in the underground or above ground, and that the powers of the BTA and the passage of the Organic Act is the historic testament of the resilient and indomitable spirit of the elders and foot so- foot soldiers of the Moro Liberation Fronts, as well as the unsung combat, noncombatants that constitute the mass base of the Moro struggle. Ladies and gentlemen, colleagues in the Parliament, this resolution's subject matter is to pursue the grant of amnesty or executive clemency for former ARMM and Magindanao Governor Zakaria Candau and former Executive Secretary Abbas Candau, who is also the founding chair of the Bangsa Moro Development Agency, who were among the selfless leaders of the Bangsa Moro who voluntarily conscripted themselves and later spearheaded the pursuit of our lifelong aspirations and has been happiness as one united people in one united Bangsa Moro homeland. Former Governor Candau, being a lawyer, was a senior legal officer of the Moro National Liberation Front in nineteen seventy-four and was a key figure in the negotiations of the nineteen seventy-six Triple E Agreement in Libya. He later became legal counsel of the Moro Islamic Liberation Front after the split with the MNLF. Additionally, Mister Speaker, our Chief Minister, who is also the Chair of the Moro Islamic Liberation Front, renewed the appointment of former Governor Candau as Senior Political and Legal Advisor to the MLF Chairman, effective today, effective as up to this day. After the negotiations in nineteen seventy-six, he was appointed LTP Chairman between nineteen eighty-six and nineteen eighty-seven for Region Twelve and was subsequently elected as first Regional Governor of ARMM in nineteen ninety. But Dato Zakkaria Candau nonetheless continued to help the MI, the late MLF, uh, Chairman Salamat Hashim Rahimullah first by serving as senior legal and political advisor. As armed governor, he was instrumental in no small measure in supporting and pushing for the full implementation of the nineteen seventy-six Triple E Agreement, which resulted to the signing of the nineteen ninety-six GRP MNLF OIC Final Peace Agreement. Furthermore, former Governor Candau was indispensable instrumental in the initiation of GRP MLF peace process in nineteen eighty-seven, which was disrupted by the two thousand all-out war against the MLF. Undoubtedly, he relentlessly worked for the resumption of the peace process, but which unfortunately led to the bungled and botched Memorandum of Agreement on Ancestral Domain. Undeniably, the peace efforts of Dato Zakkaria Candau since nineteen seventy-seven and up until two thousand six served as a major basis for the continuance of the peace process between the GPH and MLF, which ultimately resulted and culminated in the signing of the Comprehensive Agreement on the Bangsa Moro. Unfortunately, while former Governor Candau and former Executive Secretary Doctor Abbas Candau devoted themselves wholehearted, wholeheartedly to the cause of the Bangsa Moro, they were constantly under the suspicious eyes and ears of security of the security apparatos, apparatus of the state, treading on dangerous paths amid jealous and ambitious interests of many politicians and political clans in Magindanao and in the Bangsa Moro homeland. That despite Governor Candau's holding the distinction of having been twice appointed Governor of Magindanao uh, by, uh, of course, the father of the current president and, uh, then-President Corazon Aquino, he was also twice elected as Governor of Magindanao and was the first elected Regional Governor of ARMM and the last appointed Chairman of the Depang, uh, LTP. He was in the year two thousand, during the all-out war waged by President Joseph Estrada against the MLF, along with some key Moro government officials, they were included in an AFP intelligence report as political and financial supporters of the Moro Islamic Liberation Front. So it makes us wonder why former Governor Candau and Doctor Abbas Candau, as Executive Secretary then, were accused of corruption from way back nineteen ninety-four and were only convicted in two thousand eight. But nonetheless, the MNLF, the MLF, and me- members of the BTA doubt the truthfulness and accuracy of the accusations of corruption against former Governor Candau and his brother Doctor Abbas Candau because they were devout and God-fearing Muslims. We in the MNLF and the MLF believe that the corruption charges against former Governor Candau and Doctor Abbas Candau were concocted and trumped up by seen and unseen hands designed to weaken their political clout and strength, let alone neutralizing them as committed and unwavering supporters of the Moro struggle and the peace process. That they were accused born out of their deep-seated support for the political agenda of the MNLF and the MLF, namely, the legitimate rights of the Bangsa Moro for self-governance. Be that as it may, this proposed resolution does not introduce any agreement, any argument against the conviction of Governor of the Candau Brothers, but simply to ask His Excellency, President Ferdinand Romualdes Marcos Junior, to look into his powers as Chief Executive of the Republic of the Philippines. That for humanitarian reasons and being of advanced age, Governor Candau, who is now eight years old, and Doctor Abbas Candau, who is now also seventy-seven years old, may the President look as to the entitlement and qualification to be granted his absolving executive clemency. Colleagues, under Section nineteen of Article Seven of the nineteen seventy-eight Constitution states, except in cases of impeachment and/or, or as otherwise provided therein, the President may grant reprieves, commutations, and pardons, and remit fines and forfeitures after conviction by final judgment. In this case, Governor Candau and Doctor Abbas Candau were only, were already convicted by final judgment. Moreover, executive clemency, which is the subject matter of Section nineteen of Article Seven of the nineteen eighty, of the nineteen eighty-seven Constitution, it rests solely and exclusively within the sound discretion of the President, of President Ferdinand Romualdes Marcos Junior. And he alone can exercise the power to grant executive clemency to prevent a miscarriage of justice, or in this case, to correct manifest injustice. And executive clemencies, executive clemency in general can be granted to anyone, whether or not the beneficiary applied for or aspired for the said, uh, uh, executive clemency. Now, aside from being of advanced age already, considering the political background of former Governor Zakaria Candau and Doctor Abbas Candau, and that they were that they were probably, that they had probably committed the crimes for which they were convicted in relation to rebellion or in the pursuit of the aspirations of the Bangsa Moro people, it can be concluded that granting them executive clemency falls squarely within the ambit of the Comprehensive Agreement on the Bangsa Moro. And finally, the grant of executive clemency to former Governor Zakaria Candau and Doctor Abbas Candau will in effect strengthen confidence of the Bangsa Moro in the peace, in the peace agreements, not only as instruments of peace, but as catalysts of justice as well. Colleagues, my dear colleagues, I do pray that this august body will support this resolution wholeheartedly and with passion. This precisely the reason why I have not yet included most of you in, uh, most of you, my dear colleagues, in the authors or co-authors of this resolution because, uh, I want that your support will be proclaimed here publicly in the session hall, in public's view, to show to the former Governor and Doctor Abbas Candau that we have not forgotten them, that we remain, we are, we remain concerned about their plight and that we will exert effort to work for their liberty with the end in view, that Insha Allah, we will be together along with other, all the other leaders of our collective struggle in finishing what they started. Wa billahi taufik wal hidayah, wassalamualaikum warahmatullahi ta'ala wabarakatuh. Thank you, Mister Speaker.
Mister Speaker, I, uh, move to treat, ay, sorry, I move for, uh, fifteen-minute break, Mister Speaker.
There is a motion to fifteen-minute break. Duly seconded, there being no objection, Mister Speaker.
...
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Uh, parliamentary status of the proposed resolution number three three five. We have already heard from the principal author, Deputy Speaker Omar Semma. We are now ready to move for the opening of the period of interpolation, Mr. Speaker. I move to open the period of interpolation.
It is a motion to open the period of interpolation and debate. You will see candid there being objection this may be approved.
Mr. Speaker, we have a deputy floor leader attorney Jose Lorena who wishes to interpolate, to be followed by MP Attorney Ishak Mastura, MP Attorney Uy Oyod, MP Jac Abbas. The first batch will be the four, Mr. Speaker.
Yes, uh, Deputy Floor Leader Lorena, MP Kokoi Mastura, MP Uy Oyod in that order, and MP Jac Abbas in that order for interpolation. Yes, Deputy Floor Leader Jose Lorena is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. My courtesy to our floor leader, to our Chief Minister and Speaker Balindong. And of course, my respect to our deputy speaker and sponsor Omar Semma. But I have some clarificatory questions, uh, which may be bordering on the amnesty and political that I may want to be clarified if the my younger brother leads to some clarificatory questions.
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. My first question is, is our this resolution not covered already by the amnesty proclamation signed by the president both for the MLEF and MNLF, uh, so ratified by the Congress of the Philippines?
From my understanding, uh, Mr. Speaker is that, uh, it is bordering, i- i- it's actually borderline case, Mr. Speaker. Uh, because there is need, uh, there is a need to prove that the offenses for which they were, uh, convicted were done, uh, with, I mean, in relation to the pursuit of the struggle of the bangsa more meaning there is a political perspective on the, uh, accusations against them. Uh, however, uh, this is more within section nineteen article, uh, uh, of the section nineteen, uh, for a while.
Thank you. I premise that question because I know personally the person subject of the resolution. In my younger days, I was one of those who paid, uh, a group of lawyers and personalities You see also the same person who was eventually appointed, uh asked to run for Governor of Maguindanao?
Yes, Mr. Speaker, he is the same person.
And from if you know by your recollection, was he not a member of both the M N L F and the M I L F France?
I believe he is a member of both the M N L F and M I L F France. Uh initially, he was uh the legal officer of the M N L F in nineteen seventy four. And after the split of the M N L F and M I L F, he became also a senior and political and senior. Legal and political advisor of the late Salamat Hashim.
If I recall correctly, Mr. Speaker, to put it on record. Where I send the communication to Libya, I I always send it either to Ibrahim Albar. Attorney Pangalian Balindong, Ali Balindong is now a speaker. That to Sakaria Kandau. And even at that time, the vice chair of the negotiating panel was the steam chairman now of the M I L F. Hashim Salamat. So knowing this, I believe the connection of our uh. The subject of this resolution to the revolutionary movement is very strong. So may I know that when this, when was the crime committed subject of the court decision happened?
Uh from my research, Mr. Speaker, uh the complaint was filed in nineteen ninety four for, I think, uh. Uh the accusations was were dated as far as but as far back as nineteen ninety four. And he was convicted in two thousand eight by the Sandigan Bayan, Mr. Speaker.
Nineteen ninety four, Mr. Speaker, if I recall, is still. After the before even the signing of the nineteen ninety six final peace agreement, am I correct?
Yes, you are correct, Mr. Speaker. And during that time, he was one of those who helped the M N L F in pushing for the implementation of the nineteen seventy six Tripoli Agreement.
From your recollection and from your understanding, is is not the. This crime covered is a political crime supporting a revolutionary movement?
Uh.
From your understanding, I am.
I believe with my whole heart, Mr. Speaker, after they were convicted. We can assume that the crimes for which they were accused of probably were committed in pursuit of. I mean, without delving into the truthfulness and to the accuracy of the accusation, I believe. Uh they were uh committed in the pursuit of their support for their for the uh struggle of the bangsa moro.
I would like to establish a political line because nineteen ninety six was two years before nineteen ninety four. Were there already issues relative to the implementation of the final of the Tripoli Agreement in nineteen ninety four?
I think there were issues, Mr. Speaker. Uh but I I cannot seem to remember the details of those issues. But I believe one of those issues is the continuity of the of the implementation of the nineteen seventy six Tripoli Agreement.
Mr. Speaker.
If you only know. Nineteen ninety four is about eight years after the nineteen eighty six Esra Revolution. Was he was uh at that time, is this person subject of this resolution already governor of the arm or?
Yes, I think he was the first elected governor of the ARMM at that time.
In the course of the Cory administration in eighty six. Were there no negotiations between the M N L F and the M I L F and the and the government?
There were negotiations, Mr. Speaker. I in fact, I remember that uh the for the late Senator Agapito Butch Aquino even visited. Uh Professor Norm Miswari in uh in Mayimbung Sulu, if I remember right, Mr. Speaker. To purposely to find a way to continue the uh the negotiations between the M N L F and the government of the Republic of the Philippines.
Are you referring to the implementation of the agreement between the government of Cory Aquino and the M N L F pursuant to the past agreement signed between Boots Aquino? And Chairman Norm Miswari?
I believe so, Mr. Speaker.
In the meeting in Mayimbung you mentioned, was there no agreement for a cessation of hostilities so that to allow M N L F? To come forward to possibly negotiation?
If I remember right, Mr. Speaker, there was a ceasefire agreement at that time.
I confirmed that one of the agreement signed then when Cory Aquino visited the Chairman Miswari was. Outside from the other document was the cessation of hostilities. And from your understanding, because you are nearer to Maguindanao. Was uh this person subject of this resolution very supportive? Of not only of the M N L F but of the M I L F at that time?
He was very supportive, Mr. Speaker. Uh uh from the stories that I have called and researched from, of course, uh. Uh first and foremost, from my father and from the ground commanders that the former governor was really supportive of the M N L F and the M I L F.
So your understanding into your recollection was this person subject of our resolution is one of the instrumental personalities. In going to Egypt and supporting the formation of the originally new Moro National Liberation Front, now becoming an M I L F.
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
Was he, if you only know, was he together with Ibrahim Albar and uh. At our speaker, Attorney Ali Pangalian Balindong? If you know.
I I have read the book of the speaker, Mr. Speaker. Uh yeah, and I believe they were involved in the as members of the legal team of the Moro National Liberation Front.
Uh for record purposes, I'd like to state that except for Ibrahim Albar, Attorney Ali Pangalian Balindong and Attorney Sakaria Kandau. Where did then Hashim Salamat to Egypt. So I just like to put it on record because it is recorded in some of the memoirs written by my cousin. Abraham Rebar in his book G P X and on the history of the revolutionary front. I just like to put it on record to establish certain facts. Now, I would like have to have you questions ready. Uh when was the conviction, if you know, done by the regular courts?
I if I have researched, Mr. Speaker, I think it's two thousand eight. They appealed the case and was affirmed by the Supreme Court, I believe in two thousand seven, uh two thousand eleven, Mr. Speaker.
Was the affirmation by the Supreme Court came before the appointment of the O I C of the Autonomous Regional Muslim Mindanao in Muslim Mindanao?
I I cannot determine.
That is two thousand eleven?
It is two thousand eleven, Mr. Speaker.
If it is two thousand eleven, then I think the Congress has already approved the uh.
Amendment.
The point amendment of the law in the appointment of O I C. I just like to put it on record.
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
Because anyway, having said that, it is my view that uh. Although with certain preservation, that from all sides, I can look that this offense can be a political offense. Nonetheless, since it has already been with the city of the court. Do you believe that an absolute pardon may be had from the office of the president if a resolution?
Yes, Mr. Speaker, I believe so that an absolute pardon can be issued by the president. It is extensive, it is it is limited to his discretion. He he alone can exercise the discretion whether or not even the applicant or the beneficiary aspired for or applied for. Uh the pardon, Mr. Speaker.
So what you are saying is that pardon or clemency is a political decision that can be made by the president anytime he.
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, I firmly believe that the person subject of this resolution should be provided. With as part of the amnesty, if it can be given, because I think he was part of our struggle for self determination. Having said that, the other personality, I think is a brother and a former chairman of D B D A, am I correct?
Yes, former founding chair of the Bangsa Moro Development Authority, uh which we are now working with in the autonomous region, Mr. Speaker.
Are you referring to Doctor?
Uh Doctor Doctor Abbas Kandau.
Abbas Kandau. Now, is Doctor Abbas Kandau one way or another linked to the M I L F before his appointment to the B D A?
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
Was he a commander?
I believe he was a ground commander of the Moro Islamic Liberation Front.
Was he also?
And the Moro National Liberation Front.
Was he contributory to the strengthening of the moral movements in Mindanao?
Yes, Mr. Speaker, both the brothers contributed to the strengthening of the moral movement of the Moro Liberation Front, and it is undeniable, Mr. Speaker.
And do you think advocacy and participation to a revolutionary movement can be terminated by its appointment to any government post?
Come again, Mr. Speaker.
Do you think your principle advocating for self determination? And being part of a revolutionary movement can be easily terminated by just appointment to a post, political post?
On paper, Mr. Speaker, it can be terminated, but in the hearts and minds of those who truly believe. In the justness of the cause of the bangsa moro, appointment to government position is never terminated, Mr. Speaker.
Do you truly believe that by the principle of the continuity of political offense? These two subject of this personality subject of resolution can either be. Can be covered rather by the proclamation of the president for political amnesty for rebel movements, particularly the M N L F and M I L F.
I believe, Mr. Speaker, yes, because there is really a strong indication. That while they were already convicted, the accusations hurled against them were probably committed politically, Mr. Speaker.
On the alternative, can they be granted political pardon or clemency?
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
Are there jurisprudence or experience historical antecedents? That will show that there are offenses similar of this nature, which was granted by the president pardon?
Yes, Mr. Speaker, worse, even the worst uh worst cases were committed before and always. Uh by virtue of the president's act of sovereignty, they these cases were.
Without naming names?
Yes, under, yeah, under the proclamation uh of the, yeah.
Without naming names, uh are there more recent like the Pidap scandal?
Yes, yes, Mr. Speaker, and may I reiterate, Mr. Speaker, that under the proclamation it uh of executive clemency, it covers. Uh both pardon and amnesty, Mr. Speaker.
Under the principle of equality of implementation of law, perhaps, Mr. Speaker, in conclusion, I would say. That if the president can grant pardon to anybody of public official or may have committed. Uh cases of this nature, which has been pardoned, occupying sensitive position. Then in order to be paid not only to one, to the subject of this resolution for the entire bangsa moro. Then pardon should be requested from the president. Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Thank you for answering candidly.
Yes, Mr. Speaker, next interpreter is MP Attorney Mastura.
MP Mastura, MP Mastura is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Salam alaikum wrakmatullahi wa barakatuh. Uh, Mr. Speaker. First of all, I would like to 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 point out that the resolution is only signed by the proponent.
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
Uh but I also noticed that um the authors principally are. The chief minister and the speaker. And if you were checking the newspapers for the past week. Uh it was the speaker who first asked for clemency or pardon for Attorney Zakaria Kandau. And I noticed that they are not. Uh signatories of this resolution.
Yes, Mr. Speaker, but I think I need to make some corrections here. The idea of coming out with this resolution originally came out during the first B T A. But it was never pursued and until uh uh until the first B T A came to an end. Uh precisely, the speaker came out with a statement about executive clemency. But during that time, we were always in constant communication, even asking me to uh prepare the draft resolution. And we were in close coordination with the subject matters of this resolution, Mr. Speaker.
But the speaker was the one who came out with the proposal, but his na- his name is here, but his signature is not here. Can you just give an explanation, however brief it may be, that as the principal author and the one that actually went in into the public? About this resolution, why he has not been able to sign?
The speaker is out currently out of town, Mr. Speaker.
And you you are.
I was.
Attesting that he is he is really the author of this resolution?
Uh we are the authors, Mr. Speaker, uh uh the speaker and I, and even the chief minister.
So on the other hand, I noticed that all the lawyers are of this house are also members or rather authors of this resolution. How that how did that come about?
It was the instruction of the speaker.
So it was the instruction of the speaker to include all the lawyers of the house as authors of this resolution?
Yes, Mr. Speaker, and also it was in his instruction that all members of this august body be. Uh authors and co-authors, provided the sum of those who may not want to be identified with this this resolution. Will rise up and signify their intent to become co-authors of this resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Uh I I move on to my next question wherein as the proponent and as a lawyer yourself. Uh did you do your due diligence on the grounds for clemency or pardon with regard to uh. Cases that are brought to the president's attention?
Yes, yes, Mr. Speaker, in fact, I already uh.
And what are the?
I I already handled one case in which pardon was granted. And of course, I think there is really no hard and fast rule in the grant of pardon. Or reprieves or commutation of uh of sentences, except that it is an act of sovereignty and it is absolute in nature, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, go ahead, go ahead.
Uh before I forget, only the president can issue it based on the conditions that he may want. To even uh impose on the grantee of the executive clemency.
So uh can you just give us some grounds for clemency or pardon? Uh you don't have to name all, but you know, based on your own knowledge and as you've been a practitioner.
There is actually no ground, Mr. Speaker, except that it stated in section nineteen article seven that the president uh may issue, yeah, it's here.
But there are rules and regulation, Mr. Speaker, particularly in the board of pardons and parole and pardons. As to what constitutes or what will constitute as a case for asking for clemency or pardon, isn't that right?
Uh I beg to disagree, Mr. Speaker, there is no such office as Board of Pardon. Because what is uh give what, there is an office for board of parole and probation. Pardon is exclusive to the office of the president, partic- particularly cited in section nineteen article seven of the nineteen eighty seven constitution.
So are you're saying that the process is it goes straight to the president?
It goes straight to the office of the president.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, for that clarification, so it does not go to the board of paroles or probation, but goes straight to the president?
No, Mr. Speaker.
Uh, Mr. Speaker, if you look at the uh grounds that are being. Or rather, not grounds, but the whereas clauses, the predicate. Uh as manifested by my colleague, our colleague, MP Attorney Joe Lorena. Uh the the ground seems to be or paints Attorney Zakaria Kandau as a as a rebel supporter?
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
Now, in the in the one of the whereas clauses, it says here. Whereas former Governor Kandau and Doctor Abbas Kandau as executive secretary were accused of corruption from way back. In nineteen ninety four and were convicted in two thousand eight. Now, the the resolution itself talks about his role in the revolution. But the conviction is not about uh his role in the revolution. But it clearly states here that it's about corruption. How how come that there is that incongruity?
It's not actually incongruent, Mr. Speaker, there there is a substantial uh uh formulation. formulation of what the former governor and the doctor Abbas Kandao had done during the struggle in their younger years, Mr. Speaker. We go back to nineteen seventy-four and the organization of the MLF. But there is also a portion here that really has to touch with the accusations that were hurled against them. Precisely because it's now, it is now a statement of fact. This is not a statement of argument, but this is a statement of fact. Something that had already been consummated, it was already issued by the Supreme Court. So therefore, there is no point in not including that statement, because it is a statement of fact. But as far as it is my personal opinion, including I believe that there are members of the MLF, members of the MLF which do not believe in the truthfulness or the veracity of the accusation against Governor Kandao. But the fact here is they were convicted and we believe that we can even come out with a statement that even assuming that the accusations were true, they had probably been committed in pursuit of their support to the struggle of the bangsamoro, Mr. Speaker.
So, Mr. Speaker, are you not aware that when you're in government and you're supporting a revolutionary or rebel movement to overthrow the government, that is the definition of treason?
Oh, Mr. Speaker, this is not overthrowing the government. The fight of the MLF is for right to self-determination. It is not overthrowing the government.
But you admit, of course, that it is going against aiding and abetting and those who are fighting against the government.
Yeah, there is no foreign
So when you're a government official and you take your oath before the constitution to defend the republic and then you are aiding to fighting?
Probably it is not treason.
You can find another, you can find another case, but it is not treason.
I will give you that point. Anyway, that's academic now. I'm just pointing out that we have a government official and our predicate here in this resolution is he was convicted, or at least there was something that you're staying in pursuit of that cause. He was convicted, but the crime itself is, as you had stated, as a matter of fact, is corruption. So let's move beyond that. Anyway, it's there in the resolution. I'm just
Mr. Speaker.
Understand what was in the mind as the principal author of coming up with this resolution. Because if I were doing this, I would have done a more, a more congruent, let's say, a narrative that would be more aligned with what we would like to project, for example, humanitarian reason or some other reason that could persuade really the object of our appeal, which is the president. So that's just my opinion. Do not mind it so much. I'm just laying this observation. So are you aware that when you ask for clemency, that you will be asked to admit your guilt? Yes, Mr. Speaker. In fact, in this case, there is no more need of admitting guilt because they were already convicted. So that is already given, as you said, it's already laid out in the whereas clauses. So I move on, Mr. Speaker, to to the resolution itself. The resolution itself does not address. It just says to respectfully urge, but does not address where it will be given or how the process will be started with regard to the resolution. So it seems that it's more of expressing a sentiment or a sense rather than just, you know, giving a resolution to the president and asking him to do it. So if my reading of the resolution is correct, it's more of expressing the sense of the house with regard to the case or the situation of Attorney Zakaria Kandao. Mr. Speaker, is that correct? I deny that. This is merely an expression of a
Mr. Speaker.
Sentiment. Mr. Speaker, we were taught in law school that if we aspire for something, we should aspire for the stars, so that when you fall down, you fall on the tree tops. And in this case, Mr. Speaker, there is nothing wrong in requesting the president to issue a power that is solely his. And the limitations are limited only to impeachment, to election cases, yeah. And those who have not yet been Now, in this case, Mr. Speaker, if we have in our power something we can do like issuing a resolution, asking the chief, the president to issue executive clemency to someone
Mr. Speaker.
Who is probably, you say, dear to our hearts, then we should do it. And anyway, it can ultimately be seen by the by the one who exercises authority that we both express our sense and we take action on what we believe is just and doable after all. And yeah, of course, we leave it to the discretion of the president of the Republic of the Philippines. That is all, Mr. Speaker. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, MP Oyod is recognized.
Mr. Speaker, with the indulgence of MP Uy Oyod, I think MP Kandao is raising her hand on Zoom. Do you mind? Okay, so may we recognize MP Kandao, Mr. Speaker?
MP Bay Malia Kandao is recognized.
Salamat po, your honors. Ang isa sa mga bagay na gusto ko lang bigyan ng linaway, may mga kwento sa kasong ito na hindi alam ng karamihan. Because daddy has always been prudent when it comes to sharing all the things that has happened to him. Ayaw niya ng gulo, ayaw niya ng conflict. But I, as a daughter, should mention that this started during the Ramos Mitra presidency. It was an election at the time when he was being compelled by one presidential candidate to be supported by my father. Unfortunately, my father has already committed his support to one president. Hindi na ako magbabanggit ng pangalan para hindi na maglakyan issue na ito and both people were already deceased and they are already deceased and ayoko ng maging issue pa yun. The point of my interpolating or adding information to this is that marami ang naharas noon sa opisina ng governor, ng, sa LTP, sa chairman, as chairman of the LTP then, okay, and ARM, it was in the ARM. And there were, all those people who were supporting my father were asked not to report. And there were a league or a group of people sent to the ARM to prepare papers, putting my father on the spot and all those crimes against him were raised. Yung mga papelas na dapat pirmahan, hindi napirmahan, hindi mahagilak But that's a water to the breach and I do not like to mention that anymore. Wala kasi sa pamilya namin ng magkaroon ng vengeance or anything na magre-race pa ng issue. The point is, that's the main cause of the case of my father was political bilangata.
I'm sorry, MP Kandao, Mr. Speaker, may I ask for one minute suspension, Mr. Speaker?
Okay, thank you.
It's suspension. Thank you, I appreciate you.
Okay, next is MP Uy Oyod.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Thank you, Madam floor leader. By any chance, may I know if the proponent would yield to some clarificatory question? And most of this would be my manifestation on some legal matter, Mr. Speaker. Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
Just for the record, earlier, the proponent, Mr. Speaker, mentioned that there was no board for pardons and parole. I would just like to manifest, Mr. Speaker, that indeed there is a board for pardons and parole. In fact, there was a resolution, BPAP Resolution Number twenty-four dash four dash ten dated April thirteen, twenty ten. If I may read, Mr. Speaker, the title is "Amending and Repeating Certain Rules and Sections of the Rules on Parole and Amended Guidelines for Recommending Executive Clemency of the Two Thousand Six Revised Manual of the Board of Pardons and Parole." So perhaps, Mr. Speaker, the proponent might take into consideration this resolution because this is one of the guidelines in availing or in exercising the power of the president in granting executive clemency, Mr. Speaker. In fact, in this revised guidelines, Mr. Speaker, it was laid down in here, the requisites for granting an executive clemency which is not limited to pardon, but it may be conditional pardon, absolute pardon and commutation of services. So this is not absolutely an interpolation, but rather a manifestation, Mr. Speaker, that there is indeed guidelines that we may take into consideration for this resolution, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, I think if we are going to look at the resolution, it is stated that our request is premised on the, within the ambit and spirit of the comprehensive agreement of the bangsamoro. While we have made a citation in the constitution as to the provisions of the constitution, this actually is our effort to put Governor Kandao's case and Dr. Abbas Kandao's case within the ambit of Proclamation ten ninety, which is the declaration of amnesty for MLF and MLF members. We believe they are qualified because these offenses that they were accused of are clearly made in pursuit of their political beliefs.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
And I believe there is I'm not really sure if there is a Bureau of Pardon and Parole. I believe there is a Bureau of Parole and Probation.
There is, Mr. Speaker. In fact, ito po is based po sa experience ko as a former PAO lawyer. Meron po yan kasi sila pong magbibigay ng recommendation kung eligible po 'yung certain PDL na makaavail ng executive clemency. So that is one of the requirements here, Mr. Speaker, that the BPP will make a recommendation to the president if a certain inmate, PDL or whatnot is eligible to avail the exercise of the president's power of executive clemency, Mr. Speaker. That would be all, Mr. Speaker. Thank you and thank you, sir.
Yes, thank you. Anyway, we will submit to any guidelines that may be set by the National Amnesty Commission. I believe that is the ultimate action to be taken in this proposed resolution.
Bass, MP Jakabas?
MP Jakabas is recognized.
O'dwyd, I'm not sure to answer again. Bismillah rahmanir rahim. Mine is not exactly interpolation, but directly to support the proposed resolution three, three, five. I remember in the seventies, when the bangsamoro people in the boundaries in the province of Maguinalao, Sutan Kudara and North Kuta Batu, the bangsamoro people peace or met severe injustices in the area. So I remember that when Governor Datsakaria Kandao feel that the bangsamoro met severe injustices, he immediately resigned as governor of the province of Maguinalao and went abroad and he met with Professor Nomi Swari, old chairman, and Ustad Ramat Hasim. He is still there for several years and helped in Nomi Swari and Ustad Ramat for continuing this struggle. I believe that Governor Kandao helped morally, economically and many others to both Chairman Nomi Swari and Ustad Ramat Hasim. So after he's been there for many years, he again decided to went home in our province and by the consent of Misswari and Ustad Ramat Hasim. And after that, he is discredited as the first regional governor of the ARM and then sometime became also governor of the province of Maguinalao. At that time, they extend many support for the bangsamoro people in many ways. I remember that politically, he helped the bangsamoro people, our organization and many rallies. Yes, many rallies happened in Kuta Batu. Yes, many rallies happened in Kuta Batu City. So speaking of his help, I think we cannot afford to state all because we feel that Governor Kandaw extend his moral, economically, and financially support to the Bangsa Moro people. Next connection, I will say that in the name of my front, in the name of Asbiti members, I extend my support for this proposed Resolution 335. Extending clemency, the President will extend a clemency to Governor Dato Zakaria Kandaw. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Next set of interpolators, Member of the Parliament Antao, to be followed by Deputy Speaker Hassan. Okay, okay now, Deputy Speaker Hassan first, and then MP Antao, and then MP Mitmo.
Deputy Speaker Hatimilasa is recognized. Bismillahirrahmanirrahim. I'd just like to manifest, I support the resolution. However, my support does not mean that I condone corruption. I condone marginalization of public funds. My support of the resolutions is on the basis of humanitarian reasons that our dear brother, former Governor Jakaria Kandaw, be given executive clemency by His Excellency, President Ferdinand Marcos Jr. And that is not the president. Because of the fact that former governors of ARMM, they are looking for cases. So with that, I would like to manifest that the resolution could not become a basis for future actions. With that, parabasalamatu, assalamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh.
Thank you. Next is MP Antao, to be followed by MP Mitmo.
MP Antao is recognized. Thank you, Mr. Speaker, Madam Floor Leader. My colleague, assalamualaikum warahmatullahi ta'ala wabarakatuh. Resolution is only an expression of sentiment. Our resolution is only requesting and asking the President to grant clemency or pardon to this subject person. I myself would support the resolution. Regardless of how it is resolved, regardless of what we are looking for, it is important that we are all here in the parliament to be together. I do not fear the consequences of this. Because this is an act of this body. So I remember that we were elementary. There is an history of my uncle. When he said that one governor of Lalawigan had left the government because of the struggle of the Bangsa Moro. I did not know that this was the time when we were elementary. But I believe that other governors did not know. Apart from what we are doing now. So regardless of what happens to us, regardless of what we are doing now, I do believe that Governor Kandaw is still part of that. Regardless of what we are doing now, regardless of what we are doing now, I believe that either one of the governors is a contributor to us. Regardless of what the problem is, regardless of what happened, I am convicted now and our request is only to the President. Depending on the President, whether he grants it or not. At least on our level, we are trying to exert our collective effort to respect the President, to grant our wishes. For the Bangsa Moro, it is clear that if they want to challenge us, we will resolve them. May I say this, peace and blessings. Assalamualaikum warahmatullahi ta'ala wabarakatuh.
Thank you, MP Mitmo, to be followed by MP Silongan.
MP Mitmo. Mr. Speaker, I would just clarify. The application we are making, the request we are making is expressing our expressing our sense that ideally we should apply the former Regional Governor Kandaw and Dr. Abbas Kandaw for clemency and not amnesty. This is the most basic, Mr. Speaker.
Executive clemency covers amnesty. It includes amnesty.
My question is, Mr. Speaker, don't we currently have a process in relation to Amnesty Board? Then we have this executive clemency process. Or maybe we will have a more difficult situation? If we apply it to a certain process, where it is clear for activities in relation to revolutionary movement, MILF, MNLF, it is better there than in a express lane for Elon?
I think both ways, what is provided under the power of the President and what is provided under the Comprehensive Agreement of the Bangsa Moro, the amnesty, can work both well for Governor Kandaw. There is no conflict there.
Because, Mr. Speaker, when we apply for clemency, it is more likely that there is a portion where there is a case against him. The case was decided final and any person, regardless if he is a regional governor, regardless of his status in life, can apply for a clemency to the President under the process and guidelines of the law. Versus there in the amnesty, these cases are really reserved for the revolutionary movement, Mr. Speaker.
I have a question for you. Since you are both lawyers, for the education of the public, what is the difference between pardon, clemency, and amnesty? What is the difference between these three words? For the education of the public?
I think, Mr. Speaker, yeah, the clemency, I think, covers that is subject of Section 19, Article 7 of the Constitution. Clemency covers pardon, covers commutation, covers... Yeah, yeah. Yeah, covers the act of commutation of sentence, remission of fines. That is covered by executive clemency. While amnesty, Mr. Speaker, is also a power given to the President by virtue of the Declaration by the Congress authorizing the President to declare amnesty for politically for offenses that have relations with I mean, political relations, Mr. Speaker.
What about the pardon?
The pardon is absolute to the President. It is already guaranteed by the Constitution. Whether absolute or partial. Partially guaranteed by the Constitution, actually. It only does not apply in impeachment, in election cases, and those which are awaiting final judgment.
Thank you, you may continue, MP.
Because the focus is, Mr. Speaker, are we focusing on the case? The case that has finality? Or on the acts of revolutionary movement? That is all I would like to clarify, Mr. Speaker. Because for me, amnesty, why we have an Amnesty Board, is on the revolutionary acts. Versus when you give your pardon or give you conditional pardon, that is on the criminal code. For me, the revolutionary acts, including the criminal actions. Then the executive clemency, it is reserved to the chief executive, where he can give. Because the clemency, the root word for it is mercy. It means regardless of what it is, you are forgiven by the President because of sovereignty. But I would like to know, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, may I clarify? That's why we did not limit the title of the resolution to amnesty or pardon. We put it in a general sense, executive clemency, because both pardon, pardon, commutation, remission of fines, and amnesty are all acts of the executive. The latter is only, the amnesty is by virtue of the Declaration of Congress. And that is why whichever will apply here can be availed of. We can grant it to the President. The only problem is, in amnesty, we need to prove that the offenses for which they were accused of or convicted has relation to their political beliefs. That makes it quite difficult. I agree with the statement of I mean, with how it was highlighted by MP Mastura. There is difficulty of connecting, but at least we should try. Because we need to prove that we need to maintain that Governor Kandaw and Governor Abbas Kandaw were in fact honorable persons.
Okay, Mr. Speaker. I would ask you, Mr. Speaker, because before, there was a question is, what is the process after we submit the document? Definitely, we will be providing this to the Office of the President. Because we are urging our president that this is the action to be taken. But, Mr. Speaker, that is the most important thing. It is clear to us that this document can be used for on the application for amnesty, for the revolutionary acts, including the application of a case that reached finality, which any person can apply.
I agree, Mr. Speaker.
So, Mr. Speaker, if that is the tenor, later on, Mr. Speaker, because the wording is respectfully urging His Excellency Ferdinand Marcos, we would like to ensure that it is clearer. Maybe later, we reserve our right to amend to reflect more on the interests of each of us who signed this resolution, Mr. Speaker. Thank you very much.
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
Floor Leader.
I think MP Bong Parkasho would like...
MP Silongan, and then MP Bong Parkasho.
MP Silongan is recognized.
Bismillahirrahmanirrahim. Assalamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh. Will the sponsor yield for some clarification of this humble representation?
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Will the sponsor agree with me that the resolution need not any more dwell on the merit of the case since the decision has long become final and executory?
I fully agree, but it is also my sense as a lawyer to fully apprise the one issuing this executive clemency of some of our senses also as members of the BTA. And later, if you would propose any amendments, I will look at it, how it is framed.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Speaker. And will the sponsor agrees with me that we are here to invoke the absolute power of the President to grant pardon to Dato Zakaria Kandaw and Dr. Abbas Kandaw, my previous boss in the BDA, and to appeal to the President to exercise this absolute power as an act of sovereignty?
Yes, Mr. Speaker. Not only absolute pardon, but even if he can be covered by amnesty, he can be granted, Mr. Speaker.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Speaker. And so, in the proper time, in the period of amendment, we will have some enhancement on the whereasings. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you.
So MP Bong Parkasho?
MP Randall Parkasho is recognized.
Assalamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh. May the proponent yield to some questions?
Yes, sir. Yes, Mr. Speaker.
May I know if the proponent is aware of any public officials who were granted absolute pardon by the President?
I think, Mr. Speaker, there are numerous officials who were granted absolute pardon and even committed the worst offenses when incomparable to the accusations that were hurled against Governor Kandaw. I think even President Estrada, ex-President Estrada, was granted pardon, Mr. Speaker.
And do you know if President Estrada was able to participate in politics?
Yes, Mr. Speaker. Yes, he was even elected as mayor after he was granted absolute pardon, Mr. Speaker.
Now, the resolution is premised primarily by the fact that former Governor Kandaw helped in the struggle for the right of self-determination of the Bangsa Moro people. And hence that resolution. Now, I would like to know from the proponent if he believes that if former Governor Zakaria Kandaw would be granted clemency by pardon or amnesty, do you believe that he will be able again to participate and help the Bangsa Moro people to further realize their continuing struggle for effective self-governance?
Mr. Speaker, I can only speak for what I can understand at the moment. That I believe both of them, both the subject matters of this resolution are already of advanced age. Probably Governor Kandaw is already 80 years old. Dr. Abbas Kandaw is already 77 years old. And I cannot say with any certainty that they will still be participating in politics. But probably as advisors, as consultants to the chief minister, which I believe they are, both of them are still legal and political advisors in such capacity, they can continue to do such things.
In short, they can still help the Bangsa Moro people in many ways.
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
Aside from being active participants in political...
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
That's all, Mr. Speaker. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other interpreter?
Many others. No, but perhaps others are just feeling to manifest, Mr. Speaker. MP Mantawil, to be followed by MP Monios, MP Tawakal Midtimbang, MP Michael Midtimbang, and then finally, MP Mendoza. MP Babau.
MP Mantawil is recognized.
MP Jet Lim, by the way. Can we request each MP to please limit the statement or the questioning to two minutes? We still have a lot in the agenda, Mr. Speaker.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Assalamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh. So this mine is a manifestation of support. I support the proposed Resolution Number 335, granting executive clemency to former governor... to former Governor Zakaria Kandaw because, first, he's a good friend of my father. Second, they are together with my father in the first political party of MLF, the Islamic Party of the Philippines, to which they are, they are the founder. Governor Zakandaw is the founder and the first chairman of the MLF, Ustaz Salamat Hashim. Allahu yerhamo. Next, I support this because Gov Zakandaw, he's a strong supporter of the Bangsa Moro self-determination. Next, because his big contribution in the peace process, both logistics, legal, and other resources. And next, because Gov Zakandaw, he's a very strong supporter to all the Bangsa Moro friends ever since. So yun lang po, maraming, maraming salamat. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you for keeping within the two minutes. Next is MP Munios to be followed by MP Tawakal Midtimbang.
I think, I think hindi lang si Governor Zakandaw ang, Dr. Abbas did all of those.
Yes, MP Munios is recognized.
Bismillahirrahmanirrahim. Subhanakallah Il Malana Illa Ma'Allam Tana Inna Kanta Al Yimul Hakim. Babad, assalamualaikum warahmatullahi wa barakatuh. I will not be throwing questions toward Deputy Speaker, but rather I would like to manifest my intent to be one of the quotas of this resolution. I believe we need to help Governor Kandaw and his brother. Our brothers had risen in many situation for our people and Bangsa Islam. Kailangan po tulungan natin siya malaki po in many other ways. Maraming natulong si Governor sa Bangsa Islam, sa Bangsa Moro. Thank you very much.
MP Tawakal Midtimbang, MP Michael Midtimbang.
MP Midtimbang Tawakal is recognized.
Bismillahirrahmanirrahim. Wassalamualaikum warahmatullahi wa barakatuh. Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Just a manifestation support to this resolution, Mr. Speaker. Because siguro ito medyo emotional ako because Governor Kandaw is very dear to us because not only a friend, but a brother to my father. Because during the time of my father, Governor Kandaw siya ang nagstart kung bakit nagsimula ang political career ng aking tatay. When the time of Governor Kandaw, si Governor Kandaw during nineteen ninety-two, kinuha niya as Vice Governor ng province of Maguindanaw ang aking ama. Kaya si Governor Kandaw, hindi ko na po masasabi lahat ang contribution niya sa Bangsa Moro struggle. Pero kung makikita niyo, kung i-review na ang history ng Bangsa Moro struggle, makita niyo kung sino mga kasama ni former Governor Zakaria Kandaw. Yung mga kasama niya nauna na sa atin, Chek Muhammad Set Pasigan, Chek Abu Halil. Marami na sila, si Speaker Pangalian Balindong, si Andjampas, si Pangalian Balindong, si Speaker Pangalian. Sorry, Mr. Speaker, si Chek Stajkemil. Marami sila na kung matatandahan niyo for the information of this honorable august body. Siguro makita natin at narinig niyo kung ano ang contribution ni Governor Kandaw sa lahat ng mga political leaders in the past sa province of Maguindanaw. And not only in the province of Maguindanaw, but throughout Bangsa Moro Autonomous Decision Muslimidano and ARM, LTP at the time. Kaya, Mr. Speaker, I will support this resolution no matter what, Mr. Speaker. Sukra. Wassalamualaikum warahmatullahi wa barakatuh.
Thank you. MP Mike Midtimbang?
MP Midtimbang is recognized.
Bismillahirrahmanirrahim. Alhamdulillahiwabihinastainwabat. Wassalamualaikum warahmatullahi wa barakatuh. Mr. Speaker, I support this resolution. Dahil si Zakandaw, I leader ng Bangsa Moro before. Ramis yang dagawa. Malala kunung nineteen ninety, siya po ay regional governor ng ARM. Ah, naging governor ng Maguindanaw dalawang basis. Ang aking pinsan si former governor, Vice Governor Datuan Tomidimbang. Ay paras yang kapatin nung maggalaban, silin, attorney lininding pangandaman at saka si Zakandaw. Ang natiralan na mayor ni Zakandaw ay sinatuan Tomidimbang. So kaya kami po ay malapit, sa kay Governor Zakandaw. So we support this resolution. So kootor po ako, Mr. Sponsor, thank you. Wassalamualaikum.
Thank you po. MP Mendoza to be followed by MP Jet Lim on Zoom?
MP Mendoza is recognized.
Magandang hapon po sa ating lahat. Bilang isa sa mga non-Moro indigenous peoples na miyembro ng parlamentong ito, sinosuportahan ko po ang resolusyon para mag-ya ng executive clemency ang dating governor ng Maguindanaw Zakaria Kandaw. Sa mga unang kadahilanan, unang una bukod siya ay ang may pinaka-magandang mukha sa kasaysayan ng Bangsa Moro dahil sa pakaniyang napaka-angelic face. Naalaala ko kasi si Governor Kandaw, noong nagkaroon ng krises sa aming bayan sa South UPI. Masyadong mahal-mahal, mahal na mahal niya 'yung mga teduray. Nagkaroon kasi ng sinunog ng mga katutubo, 'yung munisipyo sa aming bayan sa South UPI dahil sa dubious na desisyon ng korte. Ang mga katutubo ay nakapili na ng kanilang magiging leader. Pero dahil nga sa double standard 'yung ating commission and election at the time, so hindi nasunod 'yung kagustuhan ng mga katutubo at si Governor Kandaw ay nandoon. Isa siyang abogado, pero hindi niya tinignan 'yung